... chamber's order, please rise for an invocation by Reverend Dave McCormick and Bo McCormick, then remain standing for a pledge of allegiance by Jonathan Martin from Trip 4166.
I'm the youth pastor at First Baptist Church, this is my son Bo, and he says if he's not makes it, if he doesn't make it big in the NBA, he wants to be a preacher. So I wanted to give him an opportunity to lead the prayer tonight.
Dear Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for our city and its hard-working officials. I pray that you will bless them as they conduct business tonight. Thank you for all that you've done for Popper Bluff. Thank you for your son, Jesus, and his death on the cross that gave, that gives us life. In his mighty name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please, children, in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh, here. Councilwoman Horton, here. Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Here.
Mayor DeGarris.
Here.
Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the front end agenda or with any matter discussed at the previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the front end agenda. Moving on to workshop items for discussion. Item A, the city council review request authorizing the mayor to issue a letter or resolution to support the Missouri National Guard Foundation relative to a Popper Bluff Villa's income housing tax credits to construct forty-eight units on Eugene Boulevard. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, sir, this is very similar to the project that we talked about the last two council meetings, just a different location, and actually, they're both applying to the same state agency, and actually, both of them could be funded, I don't know how likely that is, but there's several people here with this group, if y'all have any questions for them, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to go over the project with you.
It's gonna be behind the old Commerce Bank?
Yes, it's at the top of the hill, there's a property up in there.
How much property is that?
I'm not sure, how many acres?
About seven.
Seven acres. Could you explain, we've kinda talked amongst ourselves a little bit about the horses for the therapy?
My name's Andrew Danner, and I'm working with the Missouri National Guard Foundation, and we're putting this application in to the Missouri Housing Development Commission for forty-eight units for veterans and special needs set aside, and I'm working as a consultant for the National Guard Foundation, and working with Mako on the construction and the property management for down here, and then the foundation has gotten together with Cape Arrowhead to help provide supportive services and lead referral, lead referral roles for, to help us find veterans and individuals of need in the community that we can then help foster and get supportive services wrapped around them along with housing. We believe it's necessary to have good local people you're working with and support to further the mission of the National Guard Foundation and their role of housing for vets and especially vets' families. They have resiliency centers in all the armories throughout the state that the foundation can help get people to for any help they need, and I don't know all the specific, but I mean, the veterans warriors and family supportive services and all that kinda stuff that they provide to the vets, along with, we really targeted this area for the John J. Pershing VA Hospital in the area, and this is one of the targets of the foundation because there hasn't been any housing specifically targeted to their population in this area, and that's why we're going in with a family app. I can let Cape Arrowhead, Ms. Janet Brown, talk a little bit about the equine therapy for veterans and disableds and then their artwork program, and then she would also, has a list of other agencies and organizations within the community that she'll be working with, as I'm sure most of them all know her by name, she's been here a long time and done a good job for the community, but she'll be able to help them find other services, whether it's in-home care that's needed and working with the VA Hospital and any of the services that they provide with the vets. But the equine therapy is a really big thing for PTSD, and that's why, if you look through the slideshow that we sent, I don't know if we got the stuff, but it was a request from Mr. Barwick at the VA that we have a dog park and some walking trails, because that's really integral into the PTSD to help people relax and feel not like they're surrounded, and then they say a lot of their veterans just cannot leave their dogs, and so we've needed a place for them to be able to work with their animals and enjoy them, so that's really the crux of our application here. We think we have a strong one and look forward to the support, any questions you have, I can let Jan talk a little bit about her equine, and Joel Denny here with the Missouri National Guard Foundation, if you have any questions about the foundation, so.
So what you had included, what we had included in our packet was the Warriors in Transition Workshop, was that just included just to show us the different things that can be brought to the community because of the?
Yeah, well, those are actually specific things that are already in the community that Jan Brown already provides, that we're gonna help provide to the individuals within our communities that live here.
Okay.
But along with, I mean, there's just all kinds of different things we can bring in with it, we're gonna give her a supportive service budget, so she'll have somewhere, we don't have the full underwriting done yet, but she'll have somewhere between oh fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for a part-time worker to be there every day, every other day, to help find the individuals in the community and help find them services.
Okay.
Along with, we're gonna put in a reserve to help provide some of these programs for the individuals in our, in our developments, or within the community if we, we're on a waiting list and they still need help, it's not like we're gonna turn everybody away, but we'll primarily focus on wrapping services around the ones we can provide housing for.
So the National Guard Foundation would be the management company of it?
No, they won't own it, we're working with Mako as a local management company along with being a contractor.
Okay.
And I think Jason Maddox is here in the audience, if you have any questions on that.
Looks like Eugene Boulevard's on the exit entrance for this facility.
Yes.
A little bit.
I think it's a neat way, we can never do enough for the veterans, amen, and we really appreciate your efforts on it, and best of luck on that.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just the guy out in front, they're the guys doing the work back here, so we appreciate it, if you have any questions, or Jan, if you wanna say anything about your program, I'm sure they'd love to hear about it, it's really unique.
We just need your name and address, please.
I'm Jan Brown, I'm attorney here in town, my address is 502 Vine Street, Popper Bluff, and we have been doing Warrior in Transition programs for the OIF, OEF, OND veterans since 2012. We've probably had at least twenty veterans go through the program, and there's kind of a catch-22 with our program because we have two facilities, one at my residence and one at Wolf Run Retreat Center, and Wolf Run Retreat Center is eighteen miles north of town, and my home's twenty-three miles on the other side of Wapapello. Well, we have trained four of the local counselors at the VA, but the VA's rules will not let them take the veterans off campus for any program, and they won't let me and Cape Arrowhead bring horses to the VA because they're not service dogs. So what we were thinking is if we could just maybe put a lean-to up and a round pen there on the project that the foundation is getting ready to put forth, we could transport horses there, and then they could get the veterans half a mile or whatever it is from the VA, and then we could do our programs in town, and the horses wouldn't have to live there, but they would have, you know, they have a shelter, and we'd bring food and hay and sweet pea and stuff, and then they'd have a round pen that they could work in, because our program teaches emotional intelligence to these warriors that have come back from war, and they're having a hard time dealing with their families, and so we teach them emotional intelligence skills, and they don't get on the horses, it's not a riding program, but they get in the round pen with the horse and learn how to communicate with a prey animal, they become, you know, they're super hyper vigilant when they come back from war as warriors, and horses are hyper vigilant because, you know, there's things out in the woods that wanna eat 'em, so they learn how to communicate with the horse by assessing a problem, figuring out what to do with the problem, taking appropriate action, and going back to doing what they were doing before, instead of immediately reacting and doing something stupid against the things that they shouldn't be doing when they're back in society. So it's really, if you've seen, we do have a video, and it explains our program, and it has some veterans on it that talk about how much it's done for them going through the program. We also have programs for the special needs people, we have Rebecca's Riders Program for the autistic kids, we brought some of the Haven House battered women out to my place for a couple days, like I say, we're gonna have a retreat center up at Wolf Run, and so, you know, this project that these people are putting together just dovetails in with what I've been doing for these several years now, and I would just heartily endorse your ability to help us get the grants so we can do the housing, so we can take care of the people that are on my heart, because I just wanna get people and horses together. They don't have to ride, they just have to become friends, you know, learn the communicative skills that it takes for them to deal with the horsemen, deal with their families, so it, it works really good for veterans and families and the special needs that are going to be inclusive in this housing project. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion, or just a consensus?
Nothing else, we need a motion, second, move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
Aye, so move.
Aye, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, city council review bids received for Mini PCs for the City of Popper Bluff and Municipal Court in amending the fiscal year 2016 budget for the purchase thereof. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, as all of you remember, we spent quite a bit of money, I guess, back in 2014 and 15 on a computer system, basically about three and a half million dollars. Part of that upgrade was these little boxes that are called VDI's, and they're on the back of everybody's monitor, and they're supposed to replace the PCs. These things have been nothing but a nightmare, nothing but problems, and the problems has cost us quite a bit of money to resolve the issues with them. Back late last year, we had a problem at the police department where their entire system was down, we went in and replaced all of these in the police department with Mini PCs. Since we've done that, we've had virtually no problems in the police department, and our IT people, today's computers are telling us if we switch everything over to PCs instead of these, most of our problems with the computer system are gonna be gone. Basically, these, these cost us two hundred dollars apiece, you know, the three and a half million dollars or three million dollars, the guts of that is the infrastructure behind the PCs, it's the servers, all the cabling, the backups, that's where most of the money's gone to, and we haven't wasted that money, all of that equipment works great, it's just, we've had problems with these. So what we did was went out for bid on Mini Computers to replace all of our VDI's with these, and we really think this'll take care of most of our problems.
Chair, wasn't any warranty on any things at all?
There's a warranty on them, and it's, you know, it's not really the, the box itself, it's just that they're not working well with the infrastructure behind it, it's...
It was a local firm that got the bid, is it correct?
Yes, it is.
There's no further questions, entertain a motion, second, move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
Aye, so move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will discuss proposal ordinance establishing procedures for disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers. Mr. Massingham?
Pam, do you wanna address the?
This is our conflict of interest ordinance, we only have to do this every two years, but we've done it annually now, probably for the last twenty years. We did it last year, so really, we could get by until next year, but I'm just trying to keep doing what we've been doing, so it's just the ordinance that we send up to Jeff City and a copy of it, and it establishes our procedures for disclosures of interests or conflicts that we have.
Any motion, move it, voting session tonight?
No, August fifteenth.
Oh, let's see, I make motion, we move it to voting session, August fifteenth.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council review an agreement with S.H. Smith and Company Incorporated for engineering services relative to the Pipe Creek Drainage Study.
We don't need to take any action on that, or?
Okay, moving on to action required items. Bill number 7931, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Terry L. Foley for consulting services relative to the preparation of nominations to the National Historic Registry.
Move for first reading of Bill 7931 in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Popper Bluff to execute an agreement for consulting services between the City of Popper Bluff and Terry L. Foley relative to preparation of nominations to the National Historic Registry.
Move for second reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Popper Bluff to execute an agreement for consulting services between the City of Popper Bluff and Terry L. Foley relative to preparation of nominations to the National Historic Registry.
Move for adoption of 7931.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Bill number 7931 is passed. Bill number 7932, the city council will take action on an ordinance issuing the Series 2016 Revenue Bonds for Water and Sewer Improvement.
Move for first reading of Bill 7932, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one million thirty-one thousand dollars principal amount of combined waterworks and sewer, and sewage system revenue bonds, State of Missouri Direct Loan Program, Series 2016 of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, for the purpose of extending and improving the city's combined waterworks and sewage system, prescribing the form and details of the bonds and the agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect their payment, and prescribing other related matters.
Move for second reading, Bill number 7932 in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one million thirty-one thousand principal amount of combined waterworks and sewage system revenue bonds, State of Missouri Direct Loan Program, Series 2016 of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, for the purpose of extending and improving the city's combined waterworks and sewage system, prescribing the form and details of the bonds and the agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect their payment, and prescribing other related matters.
Move to adopt Bill 7932.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Bill number 7932 passes. Bill number 7933, the city council will take action on ordinance granting a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages in a C2 general commercial district for property located at 2586 Northwest Wood Boulevard.
Move for first reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading of Bill number 7933, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Aspen Midwest Properties to permit the use of a drive, a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2586 Northwest Wood Boulevard in Popper Bluff.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Aspen Midwest Properties to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 2586 Northwest Wood Boulevard, Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion second for adoption of Bill number 7933, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Bill number 7933 is passed. Bill number 7934, the city council will take action on ordinance granting a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages in a C2 general commercial district for property located at 1337 Northwest Wood Boulevard.
Move for first reading of Bill 7934, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to MMLS Properties LLC to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 1337 Northwest Wood Boulevard, Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion second for second reading of Bill 7934, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to MMLS Properties LLC to permit the use of a drive-through window for the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages at 1337 Northwest Wood Boulevard, Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move to adopt 7934.
Second.
Motion second to adopt, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Bill number 7934 is adopted. Bill number 7935, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for Mini PCs for City Hall and Municipal Court and amend the budget for the purchase thereof.
Move for first reading of Bill number 7935.
Second.
Motion second for the first reading of Bill 7935, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the 2016 FY budget of the Popper Bluff Municipal Court and City Hall in accepting a bid for the purchase of Mini Personal Computers.
Move for second reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance amending the 2016 FY budget of the Popper Bluff Municipal Court and City Hall in accepting a bid for the purchase of Mini Personal Computers.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion second for the adoption of Bill number 7935, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Bill number 7935 is passed. Resolution number 1848, the city council will take action on a resolution issuing support to the Missouri National Guard Foundation relative to Popper Bluff Villa's income housing tax credits to construct forty-eight units on Eugene Boulevard.
Move. Go ahead. Move for first reading of Resolution 1848?
Second.
Motion been made in second for the reading of Resolution 1848, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
A resolution of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri issuing support for the Missouri National Guard Foundation relative to Popper Bluff Villa's income housing tax credits to construct forty-eight units on Eugene Boulevard in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion second for adoption of Resolution 1848, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGarris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Resolution number 1848 passes. I'll have the city manager report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, public, I passed out a memo to the council earlier this evening discussing City Hall and Police Station. Normally, I try not to read something directly off paper, but since it is in memo format, I'm gonna read it. As all of you know, we have been discussing the building of a new City Hall, Police Station, and Municipal Court now for well over a year. In 2015, the city created a feasibility study committee to come up with a location for the structures. The committee consisted of several department heads and citizens, and met on five different occasions, spending many hours of their time looking at different options. At a meeting held in December of 2015, the committee recommended by vote to the council that the Police Station could be located separate from City Hall as long as the city was not going to be out any more money for that location. The college had offered a site on its campus for the Police Station with the understanding that they would not be donating the property, but rather it would be a one-hundred-year lease with the stipulation that any time during the one-hundred years, if the Police Station would move to a different location, the building would revert back to the college. Also, if the police department is to be built on the college campus, Rivers Boulevard would need to be widened all the way to Westwood Boulevard, or we would need to purchase two or three houses and construct a street to connect to Kingsland that runs parallel to the New Hampton Inn. Either way, this could be a more expensive endeavor. As city manager, I must recommend to you the most cost-effective solution for the construction of a new City Hall, Police Station, and Municipal Court. At the same time, we need to protect our citizens the best way we can. In my opinion, and from what I have learned from talking to most of the council, the Police Station, City Hall, and Municipal Court should be located together. I have always been an advocate of City Hall being located where we are currently located on the two-acre site here on Oak Street. It is more effective to build, more cost-effective to build and maintain one building opposed to two buildings. I've gone back and forth on where the Police Station should be located. The Police Station's been located on Second Street for twenty-five years, and that location has seemed to work fine. Our officers are set up in zones, and now that we have computers in the cars, patrol cars, it is very, very little need for them to return to the station except for booking a prisoner. I think we have one of the best, best police departments in the state of Missouri, we have well-trained officers that are proactive and very quick to respond to calls. The station itself can only be located in one place, and we cannot be every place at the same time. No one knows where an incident may happen, it could be at the high school, at Walmart, or at City Hall. In my opinion, the most cost-effective solution is to build on the two acres we already own here at Oak Street. Tonight, I'm asking the council to give me the authority to proceed with requesting qualifications for an architect for this project, and to set up a selection committee made up of one representative from the police department, one from municipal court, the city clerk, the mayor, one other council member, and myself, and to bring a recommendation back to the council for an architect to proceed, and let's not waste any more time. I appreciate councils putting trust in me when you hired me last year and renewing my contract last month. Let's move forward on this project.
That's for a motion to okay Mr. Massingham to go ahead and continue with his plan as he... he just explained to us.
I make a motion, will you authorize him to go ahead with the plan?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Massingham.
Thank you, that's all I have, pretty much.
Only thing that I forgot to do at the last meeting, and I apologize, I wanted to thank Hillis Dodge for the vehicles they provided again for us for the Fourth of July Parade, they do that every year, and it's nice to ride in a new vehicle or what's what. And I'd also like to thank the street department, we worked on Linda Lane and Northport's T Street for a couple of years, and that finally got cleaned out, and it looks a lot better. And then, police department, as Mr. Massingham said in his report, we've got a lot to be proud of, I said, you know, we don't realize how blessed we are with the police officers' quality that we have not only in our police department, the sheriff's department, and our local highway patrol, and it's awful all the things that are happening to the police around this country, and like I say, they step up and take care of us, and they do an excellent job, we get very few complaints, and we do appreciate them. Nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Second.
That'll take a while, won't it? Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.
I'd ask twice for that one, man. We're gonna have to vote for a while.